John, how are you?
There's a signal.
Okay, why don't we call the meeting to order, please? And we're gonna rise and salute the flag, and if we could remain standing for a moment of silence for Olver McKinnon and Nancy McDonald.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And again, just a moment of silence for Olver McKinnon and Nancy McDonald, who worked for many years as food service workers for the Abington Public Schools system. Mrs. McKinnon and Mrs. McDonald have recently passed away and will be deeply missed by many. Thank you. Okay, and to public announcements, we have Jan Prowl update for the Tricentennial, or the Tricentennial update presented by Jan Prowl, I guess.
Same thing, same thing.
Same thing. How are you?
I'm fine.
Congratulations on a very successful parade. It went off very well.
The parade was awesome.
It was.
I mean, that was one of the things, the very first things to kind of start off with is a special thanks to the Parade Committee, and of course, Jack Bailey, and he couldn't do it without Kathy. So, I mean, it was amazing to see those Hallamore Clydesdeals, all eight of them come down the street, and the special connection that I was able to make with the Wells Fargo people that handle the stagecoach and stuff like that. It was just, we kind of became friends rather than just a business deal. It was really kind of cool, and to be able to offer Mr. Genowitz, who was the chairperson of the 275th, who is now the chairperson of the 300th, and who was also a former selectman, to be able to offer him a chance to ride in the coach with his wife and a couple of grandkids was an amazing thing. I asked him if he wanted to do, you know, a once-in-a-lifetime thing, and he said, "Sure, what is it?" So, he was very pleased. It was a very successful parade, and it's been a very, very busy month. I mean, we haven't even got to the biggest part of it, I don't think. But one particular thing we want to say thank you for is the road race that was held on May 19th from the Abington Police Department Community Partners. They gave part of the proceeds to the Tricentennial, and a donation from them as part of the race, and Abington's race for the three towns for us was a $2,500 donation. So, that was amazing. So, we had that, and we took in over $2,500 from the Mayor-for-a-Day contest. So, I mean, we've really kind of had a successful, you know, time going here. So, it was really, really, really important. And basically, we had the half marathon June 3rd, went right into the parade on June 10th. This past Saturday, we had a, we designed, actually Doug Awick designed a special commemorative stamp that the post office generated, and there are envelopes available at the post office. The cost is $2, and they will place a special commemorative stamp on it, cancel it right while you're there. And so, we did that on Saturday. And now, we're coming up, I think, to one of the biggest events of all, which of course is the Field Day, children's costume parade, fireworks, fun games, and the outlook for Saturday is amazing. The temperature is actually going down. It's not going to be 100 like they're predicting for Wednesday into a Thursday. It's supposed to be like in the high 70s, and just, you know, I'm ecstatic over this. I mean, we've been planning this part of it. We actually started in August of 2010, working on this Tricentennial event. So, this is really, really amazing. So, that's kind of what's going on right now. We want to give a little bit of an update about the Field Day this weekend. There is a cable show that we shot last week, and it is running. It will be running in Whitman pretty soon, and hopefully Rockland pretty soon. We do have, and will have, we have commemoratives. There will be a commemorative table down there. We still have items that are to celebrate, and, you know, you can purchase one for our 300th event. We have many, many things down there. There will be a table. There will be more shirts, because we actually ran out of them over the parade weekend, tried to stock Bemis and a few places, and that didn't happen. So, there is a poster calling Tricentennial commemoratives around a few places on town. You can pick up things at the Tricentennial under the information tent that night. Also, there is, as I said, the commemorative envelope that is at the post office right now. You can walk in anytime. We did have the special event on Saturday. There is a banner hanging up on the front of the North Abington Post Office that says that you can go in and get it. There are people ordering it from as far away as California and Oregon, because they find it on the postal section. The Country Field Day. This is really amazing. This is Saturday. The gates will open at 2:00. There is a children's costume parade, and there are flyers all over the place. I can't tell you how many of these we've actually printed. They've gone to all of the public schools in May in all three towns. They went out with all the children from school last week. There's four categories. There's historic slash patriotic, tri-town spirit, which means just figure out what your town is, do what you want with it, you know, and be a mascot, you know, come as a football team, anything. The fantasy fun, which could be anything that children come up with. And of course, every child wants to be a monster, so we have a horribles section. Groups are welcome, individuals are welcome. The children will register on the front lawn of the Frollo School. The information is on our website. We actually have bibs left over from all of our road races that were donated by New Balance that Tim Walls got for us, that say Abington Tricentennial. So, we have plenty of bibs to use for the kids for their numbers. And that's one of the reasons why I'm here tonight is to also, I'm not going to actually read the whole letter. We sent a letter to all of the selectmen. We're judging the parade, all four categories for a second and third prize. The children's parade committee has requested that a representative from the selectmen of each town serve as a judge that day. Rockland was unavailable, and we have retired fire chief Kevin Henderson is going to act as our judge from Rockland. Whitman, I believe their selectman meeting is also tonight, and I dropped off the letter last week. So, we had dropped off a letter here, but I'm not going to read the whole thing. Basically, we'd like one of you to offer to volunteer to help head judge Phyllis Wheatley on the front lawn of the Frollo School to judge the children's costume parade. And if your children are in it, you may not judge. And, you know, you can get back to us, send us an email or something like that. It's no decision you have to make this evening.
No, we'll do it, actually, we'll do it right now, husband.
Fine with me.
Is anybody interested in being the judge?
I don't like kids, so. I'm working, so.
I was planning on being in it.
There's always one.
That's it.
I'll do it if nobody wants to.
I just, I wouldn't mind doing it, but there's a good chance that some of my grandchildren will be in it or whatever, and so it wouldn't seem quite right.
Tommy, do you have any interest?
I'm actually going to be at a graduation party during the day.
You are? I'll do it.
All right. Basically, it's, registration is from 2:00 to 2:45 on the front lawn of the Frollo. We ask, we're going to have the judging done ahead of time before we get down to the field, because once those kids get down there, it's not going to happen.
It'll be chaos.
So, if you can meet Phyllis on the front lawn, and we'll try to get somebody from Whitman. That's what we were shooting to do. So, that's kind of it. But anyway, that wonderful, thank you for volunteering to do that. The parade will kick off at 3:00. It will start from the front lawn of the Frollo. Just go down Washington Street, they'll close it for a little point there, down Ralph Hamlin Lane and into Memorial Field. We're setting up a whole stage at the far end that will be down there for all the music. It's all afternoon. So, the children will come down there. We'll announce the winners down there. The kids are going to get something free. Don't want to give too much away right now. We have live music all afternoon. There's a DJ that'll bring the kids in, DJ Drew. We also have our own Abington Community Band that will come on around 4:30. I think it's about almost 50 members in that. At around 5:30, we have, these are volunteers. We have South Shore Men of Harmony, and Aaron Christian, our mayor for the day, is the youngest man, a member of South Shore Men of Harmony, and his grandfather belongs to. And we also have, joining them will be the Island Grove Chorus, right out of, you know, Abington here. They rehearse here. They're a division of the Sweet Adelines, so they'll be working with them. At 6:30, we're going to kind of quiet everything down for a little moment, kind of gather everybody around the stage. We have a presentation of certificates for the winners of the 30 for the 300th. For those of you that didn't know what that was, it held earlier this year. It was a contest that went out to all the children, grades pre-K or kindergarten through grade 12 in all the schools in all three towns. They could submit a poem, a story, a photograph, or a drawing. And Rosie Walls and Eileen Walls, on the Commemorative Book Committee, went through a stack of drawings and photographs and everything down there, and they picked 30. And those winners will be announced with a certificate. There were also, we've also created, actually, I don't know how Irene Nicholson, from Nicholson Design did it. It's an amazing banner that's three feet by eight feet. Of all of the artwork will be displayed down there. So, you get to see everything that's going in the commemorative book, which we're still working on, by the way. We're hoping to have it out in June, and I think we're going to wait until the fall after all the festivities are concluded and kind of put the whole thing together as one big book. It was a bigger undertaking than we had anticipated, so that's part of it. I believe also Sean Riley spoke to our wonderful girls' softball team that are now number two in the state, and I believe they will be recognized somewhere before 7:00. And coming on at 7:00 will be Dale and the Duds, a great hometown, you know, favorite here for us in the summer concerts. Most of the guys out of East Bridgewater, and everybody locally loves them around here, so they'll be here this evening, that evening, and also supplying a sound system and everything for us. All the food is local. You know, if you don't bring your own food, which you're welcome to, bring a chair, bring a blanket, no tents, please. You know, just bring it down there, you know, sit down. If you don't want to bring your food, we have, if I name them all off, I'm going to miss somebody. But I know we have the Boosters, we have the Lions Club, we have Troop 41, we have youth softball. Christie Coombs will be down there. We have Friends of the Island Grove, we have Friends of the Seniors. We have everything from, oh, Pete Morrell's got barbecued chicken and barbecued beef and coleslaw, and we have sausages and peppers and onions from the Rotary. We got hamburgers and hot dogs from a couple of different groups, and strawberry shortcake from the Lions Club. And I could keep going. I know I'm going to miss, I know I'm going to miss somebody, so if I did, I'm sorry, but it's impossible to remember them all. And there will be, everything down there is free, unless you want to buy your own food. There's no admission charge, there's no free, you know, everything's free. We're not going to charge anything. There will be a dunk tank. Now, the history that I'm hearing about the dunk tank right now, and I'll know more this evening, because our meeting is at 7:00 for the Field Day, is that whoever signs up to be in the dunk tank, we are going to offer them the opportunity to, we are going to charge for that. And whatever they take in, and the amount of time that they're dunked or not dunked, will go to the charity of their choice. If they choose to give it to the Tricentennial, we won't be ashamed to take it. So, just want to let you know, there is a dunk tank for anybody that wants to be dunked, or you may be a donkey from somebody else.
It's the last thing you do. I'll do it if they do.
See, yeah, the last thing you need with your back. So, Sean Riley, see Sean Riley if you want to be in the dunk tank. So, the dunk tank, there's going to be a rock climbing wall that has four sides that, you know, the upper, older kids can do, a couple of bouncy houses, one for younger kids, one for a little bit older kids. There's a blow-up obstacle course. There is a giant slide, blow-up slide they're going to have. Rosie Walls is organizing all of the games. There are going to be games, hula-hoop games, put the balloon between your legs and walk, you know, carry a potato on a spoon, there's hula-hoops, there's just all kinds of games with the stuff. And again, everything is free. This is intended to be a fun day for families and just have a great time. And, geez, I guess I have to mention, we do have fireworks that night. Garden State Fireworks will be supplying our fireworks show. It will go off probably 9:15, 9:30. It is the summer solstice this week, so the sun's really not going to go down until 8:30. So, Dale and the Duds will be playing from 7:00 to 9:00, and the fireworks go off after that. And give a little bit of update, too. The, there are going to be signs around town where we have our town meeting signs that say the Field Days. We just had them up for the parade, so that'll be around towns. And just make sure, it's in the back of my car, too, because we had an extra one. And also, just want to let, we made some parking passes. We have some for volunteers, we made some that are handicapped. There's no guaranteed handicap parking down at Beaver Brook, but just want to let you know that we did leave 10 at the senior center and 10 with the town clerk downstairs. You can come and get them. There is limited parking. The parking area at Beaver Brook will be closed off, and only for the volunteers, the music, the food, that type of things. There's limited, again, limited parking. It's kind of first come, first served, and we need to accommodate the people that are working. We have many, many volunteers. And while I say that, you, I'm really tired of wearing this green shirt, and I do have other clothes, but we do have a special shirt that we designed for our volunteers. It has the tri-town seal on the front, and you will be able to see any volunteer down on the field, from adult to teens to youngsters. We also have many young people from the teen advisory board from the library that will be helping us. Everybody that has a yellow shirt down there is a volunteer. And if you need something, or you need help with something, just go to anybody that has a yellow shirt. They'll be able to help you immediately. So, again, the parking passes are down there. Beaver Brook is closed off to public parking and will be closed off. It is only for the people working down there. Behind the Frollo is closed off. There will be barricades there. There will be people checking parking passes. If you think you can take this to a printer and copy it, it doesn't work, and they will be checked. We have volunteer passes, we have music passes, and we have food passes, and then a handful of these. And again, there is not designated handicap parking at this time. We have to leave clearance per the fire department and the police department. Ralph Hamlin Lane will be closed, and there will be no traffic allowed up or down there except police or fire. Entrance is at the back entrance of the Beaver Brook School for volunteers, food, music, and that type. Anybody else, you'll be able to park on Washington Street. The police are not going to close it off. At some point, due to safety, once it gets pretty full, they will close it from probably Central Street till Adams Street, but that may not happen till later in the evening. So, just beware parking-wise. There will be parking at the high school. Timber Lanes is going to have parking, and I believe the scouts are doing a fundraiser there. I believe the music, parents might be doing it at the high school, and, you know, other places around. But, you know, just enjoy the day, come out, you know, have a great time. And, you know, we just really, really thank everybody. I mean, the support that our committee has had, and there's only 12 of us on the committee. It's been an enormous undertaking, and I can't thank the other members enough for all their hard work, and the businesses and the people of this town, Whitman and Rockland, and how they have supported us, the funds that we have raised, and recognize again our platinum sponsors, Abington Bank and Cape Cod Lumber for their $10,000 each donation. So, I just want to thank everybody for the time. I know we took up a little bit here. We've got a judge for the parade, which is awesome, and come down to the Field Days. It's going to be a beautiful day, and I think the fireworks show by Garden State Fireworks is going to be awesome. So, we look forward to it. Thank you very much.
Any questions? Thanks, Jan, very much. Thanks again to your committee. You guys have done a fantastic job throughout. And we have one, a proclamation here from the governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which I'm going to read. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, a proclamation is excellency Governor Deval L. Patrick, whereas Governor Joseph Dudley of Massachusetts Bay Colony named Abington in 1706, six years before the town was incorporated in 1712. And whereas much of present-day Abington continued under the jurisdiction of Old Bridgewater until the original township of Abington was created on June 10, 1712. And whereas shoemaking was the first prominent industry other than lumbering, milling, and the cottage industries in Abington proper. And whereas during the 19th and early 20th century, the manufacture of boots and shoes was its primary industry, with nearly half of the footwear provided for the Union Army during the Civil War being provided by Abington factories. And whereas, on this day, we celebrate Abington's 300th anniversary and recognize its many contributions to the vibrancy of the Commonwealth, now therefore, I, Deval L. Patrick, Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim June 10, 2012, to be Abington Day, and urge all the citizens of the Commonwealth to take cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in its observance. Given at the Executive Chamber in Boston this fifth day of June in the year 2012, and of the Independence of the United States of America, the 235th, by his excellency Deval L. Patrick, Governor of the Commonwealth, William Francis Galvin, Secretary of the Commonwealth. And I think, was it you, Nancy, who had a role in getting that proclamation for us? Thank you very much. That's great. Anything else on the Tricentennial? Anybody have any questions? If not, we do have a couple of other public announcements. As Jan had mentioned, the girls' softball team from the high school was a finalist for the first time in the state championship, although they came up one run short. The score was 1 to 0. They had a fantastic season, so congratulations to them. And we have, Summer Concert Series is going to be starting on July 1st. And I think if you go on the town website, you can link to the Summer Concert Series, and you can see what bands are going to be playing and what the dates are. They're starting July 1st, and the last one is August 26th, and it looks like they run pretty much every week. So, anybody who's interested knows, those are always a good take. Anybody else have any public announcements? Public appointments. 6:30 PM, we have an application for a Class II and commercial garage license for 500 Brockton Avenue. Let me just read the hearing notice. Town of Abington Public Hearing, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 18, 2012, at 6:30 PM. In the Carter Hearing Room on the application of Robert W. Hayes for a Class II and a commercial garage license. Easy Auto Rental, Inc., doing business as Autotown Truck Sales, 500 Brockton Avenue. Our Andrew Burbine Chairman. Is Mr. Hayes here? Want to come on up? Can you just give a little bit of a rundown as to what you're proposing to do?
We're going to be in the commercial truck business as we add 500 Brockton Avenue. Trucks, vans, light duty to medium-duty trucks. I bought the property about a year and a half ago, and as you can see, I've done major renovations. I tore the building down, put up another building. Kind of took away the blight that was there for the longest of times, and now I'm ready to go.
So, are you going to be selling?
Yes, sales and, you need a commercial garage license for the repair end of it.
I just, I had a couple of questions just on the parking for customers, you're saying, just only three spaces for customer parking? Is that the case?
Yes.
Do you think that's going to be sufficient for?
Yes.
Yes, really? Yeah. And you have five employee spaces?
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions?
Just have a question on the note here on the applications. The Class II license should be contingent upon the Attorney General approving the bylaw changes submitted as Article 15N, cap on Class II licenses at the April 2nd annual town meeting. Some explanation there?
Can you just explain that a bit, John?
I'm not quite sure if I understand.
As you know, we went to town meeting to remove the threshold, the number of Class II licenses that could be issued in the town, and we found out through our council that that was inappropriate. There was a recent ruling that indicated that towns that had that kind of bylaw could no longer arbitrarily or capriciously establish a number of licenses for Class II. And so, we removed that, and we're waiting for the Attorney General's approval of those bylaws, which were submitted as a whole once town meeting concluded as abruptly as it did. So, we're waiting for the Attorney General to say that that's okay.
So, does that imply now that we're at the cap? Unless they get this ruling?
No, no, we've always been over the cap. And what has happened in the past is that people have kept licenses, and they've tried to broker them. And so, if we eliminate the number of licenses, the number itself, then we can decide how many licenses. We could issue licenses contingent upon a number of different, you know, characteristics. For example, Mr. Hayes is proposing to have a Autotown Truck Sales. And, you know, we could establish in the license conditions such as, you don't want trucks idling more than, you know, 10 minutes or, you know, per regulation of the state or the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Or we could establish, because it's near a residential area, we could establish contingencies, and we could say that you can't, we want your business to operate between the hours of 8:00 and 6:00 versus 8:00 and 8:00 because of the closeness of the neighborhood and location of the actual business. So, it's really designed to give the Board of Selectmen the latitude to make any number of conditional decisions that they want to make in relationship to the Class II license before they issue it.
But again, I think you answered my question, basically saying there's no cap anymore in Class II licenses. Where right now, as we sit here, there is a cap, even though we're over it. So, we'd have to make this vote contingent on that Attorney General approval of the bylaw, which we anticipate will be done when?
Well, it should be done before July 1st, no question.
Okay. Thank you.
They can take up to 90 days from the date of town meeting to approve any of the bylaws. And we'll know about the ones that they're not approving before we'll know about the ones that are approved. So, it's almost conditional. If they're silent and they have nothing to say about it, that we can assume by July 1st that it will be approved.
Any other questions, comments? Ken?
What's the difference between a Class I and a Class II? What is a Class I license?
Class I is for new cars.
For new cars, okay.
And Class III are junkyards and...
Okay. And then at the top of the application, $100 fee is written over by $50. Does that just mean it's not, it's incorrect or?
I could explain that if you like. We, originally, we had $100 fee, but what we did was we split it, and $50 of it comes to the Selectmen's Office, and then the applicant goes down to the Building Department, and he assesses the fee around $50, usually is. So, $50 goes into the Building Department, which is the way that the inspectors are paid, the part-time inspectors, and $50 of it remains in the Selectmen's Office.
There's nothing in packet, though, I think, from the Building Inspector, is there? Just from the police?
Yeah.
There should be.
He did send a late one, very late this afternoon, it's on your desk.
Okay, all right.
I have a couple of questions. You have 130 parking spaces for trucks on this premise.
This isn't a big type of truck, Mr. De Auguste, you know, it's like van pickup type thing? Media, light duty?
So, if the Board was to say that you would be selling or leasing or whatever you're doing, light-duty trucks should be defined in the following manner. You wouldn't have a problem with that?
Light duty to medium duty, no, no problem whatsoever.
Questions? Can I, Mike?
Do we have a fixed amount of space for parking spot? I mean, is it five feet, six feet, eight feet? When we require a plan, such as we have in front of us, and, you know, showing all these vehicles, and actually showing them more or less, I'd have trouble getting into them. I have trouble getting into most cars. But is there a, you know, I mean, is it always the same amount? If you're going to tell us, the Board or Inspection Services, that you have 10 parking spots, are those 10 parking spots for this gentleman going to be the same as they are for anybody else in town?
There's two ways you determine public parking, you know, parking for, under the bylaw for... One is on a per-seat basis for restaurants. If you have 130 seats in a restaurant, you then have to have X number of parking spaces. You can do, for public purpose, you could do the same thing on a square footage basis. So, what is the square footage of your building, for example?
I had Gabby, Kyle Gabby in Whitman, look on the layout. He's a license surveying engineer, and he engineered the spaces to the state regulations for parking, so...
Just for my own curiosity, is, do you know what the state regulation is? I mean, I trust Kyle, a real person.
And we have that, Bob, that's...
Oh, okay.
Right.
They have a copy of it. We have a regulation at the local level for a number of parking spaces. And it's based on two fat, one or the other factor. Square footage of the building or the number of seats. So, I'm looking and trying to figure out what the square footage of the building is.
Building square footage minimal compared to the square footage of a lot.
I know. So, would you say, yeah, there's 67,000 square feet over that. Would you figure that there is 25,000 square? Would you figure that the, there is twenty-five thousand square feet?
The building, no. The building's...
Ten?
Thirty by, thirty by thirty-six and the other part of the building is twenty-four by thirty.
So, we can look up on the, on our town bylaws, for example, not state regulations, and determine how many public parking spaces you need to have based on the square footage of the building?
It just seems to me we'll have three, three parking spaces for all those cars you're selling and then you have repairs that you're doing there also.
Mm-hmm.
It just seems to be as though, it could be a problem. If you have three people looking at a car and then somebody else bringing their car into being serviced, then I think you're going to have some problems.
That, that's a visible corner.
That's my only concern, but...
It's a very, very visible corner to the town and what we don't want to do is to make it look like you're, you're fitting a lot on the lot, you know.
I understand.
Yeah. And so, that, that would be, you know, my concern from a, you know, perspective. Brockton Ave. is a busy avenue and it's really closer to the entrance of the town than it is to the center of the town in, in a lot of respects. And so, people coming down Brockton Ave. in, into Abington, I think that the number of spaces are a lot and I, I think that we should look at what our bylaw dictates for the number of public spaces based on the square footage of the building.
Well, I have a copy of the previous license. I don't know if that really helps you at all, but it says, "A lot containing a hundred and five by two hundred and fifty, cost to be parked in front of showroom building, one hundred and twenty-six cars for all purposes. Buffer zone of trees to remain on property." This was previous license that was issued to, I believe, the previous owner.
And that, that fee was a hundred and fifty bucks.
Oh, that's a license fee. This one is to...
We got to get you for that, okay?
But the Building Inspector does go out and count the spaces based on the square footage.
Thank you.
And he says everything is fine?
Yes.
He did. Any other questions from the Board? Anybody in the public have any input, any questions? If not, why don't we take a motion to close the hearing? Everybody's all set, right?
Well, just, just one question, John. You had, you had mentioned about the, the town bylaw. Is that something we should have a concern with?
Um...
I mean, I want, I want to go forward with this.
Yes.
But I also want, I didn't know in, with the Indians, I kind of share his concern if there might be, three might be a little bit on the low side. I certainly don't want to punish you in any way, but if there's something that maybe we could work out with the town manager, you know, give you approval if you could work out the concerns with the town manager, which isn't much really, but we'll go forward. You could check the bylaw and...
Yeah, we can, we can look at the bylaw and bring the Building Inspector in and make sure that everything is in compliance.
And I mean, he's too harsh, just bring it back.
Okay. Why don't we have a motion to close the hearing first?
Let me make the motion.
And a second.
Good.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? It's unanimous. It's the pleasure of the Board.
I'll make a motion. We approve the license. Reports of Inspection Services, I think has already been done and just if we could work out the concerns with the town manager, make the motion, we approve.
You're doing, you want to do both the Class Two and the Commercial together?
I have no problem doing them together because they're both the one and the same kind of, in my book.
All right.
I'm just wondering if it should be contingent on the Attorney General's...
And, yes, I think that's right, Tom.
Yeah, yep, yep.
In contingent on the Attorney General's approval.
Of the bylaw. Submitted as Article 15N.
Yep. Okay. So, that's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Good luck with it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay. Next public appointment, six thirty-five PM. Application for a Commercial Garage License, 123 Center Avenue. The public hearing notice, Town of Abington, public hearing. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 18th, 2012 at six thirty-five PM in the Carter Hearing Room, 500 Glenneveage Way on the application of Walter Maruso for a Commercial Garage License, 123 Center Ave., doing business as Auto FF Towing. Our Andrew Burbine Chairman.
I'll make a motion, open the hearing.
And a second? To open the hearing?
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. The hearing is open. Is Mr. Maruso here?
Yes.
Can you come forward, please? How are you? Can you just give us a little overview of what you're planning on doing?
Yeah, the, the shop is open, the, the garage is working. I just went, I rent this garage, the Autobryce USA, but I just wanted every responsibility in my company and FF Toy because the guys rent the place for me. He, he don't want to take a responsibility about the tax, about nothing for the city. And just because I came to, want to make this license for, because I, I just want to take the whole responsibility for the buil, the business with me.
So, you're basically leasing the business?
Yes.
Is that what's happening?
Yeah.
And you, who are you leasing it from?
Uh, and Autobryce USA.
And who, who, okay, so there's two companies there?
No, it's a, one company, it's a mechanic and bodywork.
Okay.
And I, I just put it FF Toy because FF Toys are my company and I rent the place.
Do you, do you rent the whole building?
Yes.
Okay. Because that, that was the question I had, Dory, on the parking. Sir, I just, on the, on the diagram we have, it shows the parking, you know, around the building, right up against the building and then it's a delineation, the parking on the edge of the building for Autocraft Parking.
Yeah, the, the, the left side, the park's mine and the front side. The right side, it's a, I think so is a dealership and so, where the guys sell cars, it's not a park, it's not my park.
But is he in your building?
Yes.
Okay. So, you, what, what portion of the building do you actually?
I use in the back and the front and the left side.
So, he has an office there?
Yes.
Okay.
But all, but you're, you're using twenty of these spaces that surround the building?
Yeah, because the guy, he, he just had a license for selling cars, but he don't use it. He didn't, he tell me if you want to use it, that's okay.
Okay. So, you have parking spaces one through twenty?
Yes.
As set forth on this matter.
That's right.
And are you, your application says, sir, that you're a sole proprietor, but there's another, is a Rothenberg Maruso listed as the manager?
It's my brother, it's my brother, it's the manager.
So, is he an employee or?
Uh, he's, he's a, he's a part of the business, but I put him an employee into. He's a manager for the shop.
Is it more of a partnership than an employee, is that what, with him?
He's my brother, it's working together.
Hell, I know that. But my concern is you, your application says you're a sole proprietor or a partnership and that you have no employees.
Yeah, that's true.
So, is he an employee? He's not an employee?
No, he's not an employee.
He's not an employee, okay.
But, but then he has workers' compensation insurance for employees.
Yeah.
He, he, below that, so, you might as well consider your brother an employee.
Yeah, I had a, and my brother and I had a, now I had a true employee because the true is gone.
And, and just the other question I have, it says that your hours of operation are eight to six, Monday through Friday and eight to three on Saturday and it closes on Sunday.
Yes.
Is that the same hours of operation as the other businesses located?
That is the same.
It is.
Any other questions?
No, I just, just to be sure though, it says six, six PM, that's...
Yes.
The work stops.
That's right.
Is there a Class Two license at this address too? Is there, is there a car dealer at this address?
Is there a car dealership at this address also?
No.
Do you know?
No.
So, we're not selling any cars at this address, it's just repairs?
No, just repairs.
What is, what is Autocraft? Is he a?
And I, this is a business there before, it's a long time ago.
No, but, but what is Autocraft, what is his claim to fame? Is he a Class Two dealership?
Yeah. I, I, I don't know nothing about the guy. The guy's in a, had a, I, I rent the business and the owner of the business said to me, one guy is selling cars in this right side, but he had a license, I, I don't know nothing. Just, I just, the guy just said to me, I had a license, but I don't sell any cars nor not. If you want to use my space, that's it.
No, no, that, that's fine. It's just that, as, as the Board, we can't just, you know, acknowledge, we acknowledge you, you are here. Is there another license on the property? That's the question because we really...
Yeah, Autocraft doesn't have a Commercial Garage License.
No.
No. So, it really shouldn't be technically in existence there. I mean, there shouldn't be a delineation for cars or anything from Autocraft.
Right.
He's not licensed property.
Right. And it's not on your list to approve tonight.
This could be an old man too that they use.
There's nothing with that address approved either, right? There's no Class Two at, at that address?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions from the Board? Any questions from the public?
No, it just, it just seems fine to me that Autocraft is leasing the property to this gentleman and he's really not licensed to be there. That, that's what I'm getting at, is that?
Because of the building, right? It's a, it's had a lot of buildings in the same space. It's a, one a building in the back, one a building right side and my building on the left is having a pizza making front and another...
Yeah, no, no, I, I actually...
And this guy's in the, selling cars. He, he's owning a building for the right side, but he using this space, the my...
No, I, I understand what you're saying, but he doesn't have a license to sell cars is what I'm saying. He, he might be selling cars there and, and, but he doesn't have a license to do that. That's, that's, when I'm looking at this, I'm a little confused over, you know, the, the gentleman without the license that's selling cars is leasing you the property.
But I tell him to sell the cars because the people tell him to sell, but I never see he sell one car over there.
Bottom line is there's no license for that property to be selling cars, correct?
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, if they ask selling them, then...
And not only that, but there are taxes due on, on, on this...
Property.
On this property. I think we sent that information out to you earlier in the week.
So, so not to be...
So, it would be, would be, the license would have to be contingent upon, you know, prop, the, the personal property or real estate property taxes need to be paid and full before they, we can issue the license.
No, I, I think he indicated he wanted everything to go smoothly with this again. We already ran into a couple hurdles, but...
Any other questions, concerns, comments? If not, then we can accept a motion to close the hearing. Somebody wants to make that motion? Tom makes the motion?
Yes, sir.
And a second. All those in favor closing the hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. It's the pleasure of the Board.
Well, I, I certainly want to see the gentleman go on in business. I have my concerns about what, I mean, I don't know how we protect our vote on this with the Building Inspector Canada, find out what's going on as far as Autocraft goes or, you know, how do you, how do you do that? And then, and then of course, we have to have the taxes paid in order to grant the license. But who's, who would investigate the fact that there could or could not be cars being sold without a license?
Building Inspector.
Could, could that be part of the motion? Would it, that be right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure.
All right, so we'll have him check that situation out and if, if that be the case, granted if the taxes get, I'll make a motion to approve.
Just Tom had a comment.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, he's, this gentleman has nothing to do with selling the cars.
Correct.
Right? He's just applying for an application to fix cars. So, it would seem to me it's two separate issues if, if the owner starts selling cars, that seems to be a different issue then.
That's right.
So, okay. Just to make sure.
Yeah, that, that is correct, but the issuance of the license itself requires that the taxes are paid either by the owner or by the...
Yeah, I, I wasn't, I mean, my motion didn't indicate holding it against him.
Oh, yeah, right.
My motion is simply that I would like to have that aspect of it investigated.
Sure.
And that's not this gentleman's problem, it's, it's the other guy.
But the license itself would be issued contingent on all taxes being paid up to date. And you understand the hours, eight to six, Monday through Friday, Saturday, eight to three?
It's contingent on all properties, personal and real, yeah, properties being paid.
We have to.
Yeah.
Okay. So, do we have a motion by Mike? Is there a second? And a second by Tom?
With the contingencies that we're discussing.
Yeah, it's contingent on...
Taxes being paid.
Taxes being paid.
Taxes, both real and personal.
Building Inspector going down to determine if cars are being sold on the lot and if they are, that, that is not part of the license.
Right. Okay. All those in favor of the motion? Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Good luck, sir.
Good luck.
Action discussion items. Number one, approval of minutes, May fourteenth, 2012, open session.
A motion to approve?
A motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
And a second. Any discussion?
Just want to make sure there's a copy of the, the warrants attached to this because it refers to all the articles and then if you don't have the articles with it, you wouldn't know. We're voting.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. May fifteenth, 2012, open session.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And is there a second?
Second.
A second by Tom. Any discussion?
All right, I'll be abstaining from this vote.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Zero and one abstention. May twenty-first, 2012, open session.
I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? It's unanimous. May twenty-first, 2012, executive session.
I'd like to make a correction. If it's agreeable to the Board on the second page, I know we're not supposed to probably discuss it, but done the motion made by Mr. Donovan, I, I voted against that motion, I believe.
Okay.
I believe it was four to one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The second paragraph from the second page?
Um, yes, the motion made by Donovan.
Yeah.
I voted against that.
Was that Articles, Article seven?
No.
No, this is on the executive session.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, it was four, one.
Right. You're talking this right here.
That's correct.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
And not to release until...
Till legal.
Till all, yeah, all matters have been resolved.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Aye opposed. Okay, that's number one. Number two, request to designate the position of Abington representative to the South Shore Tri-Town Development Corporation Board of Directors as a special municipal employee pursuant to the provisions of Mass General laws, Chapter two sixty-eight A. And that request was made by Mr. Lavin, who was a designated of the South Shore Tri-Town Development Corporation. I think you've had something to say on this, John.
I do, yeah. Actually, um, according to town council, the State Ethics Commission first has to determine the South Shore Tri-Town Development Corporation was or is a public entity, and then it would liken it to a municipal district. Employees of municipal districts are treated for conflict of interest law purposes as employees of every municipality in the district. Therefore, if the Board of Selectmen believes it is appropriate, such position could be designated as a special municipal employee position. So we can, if, if the board decides they want to do this, we can make a contingent upon the State Ethics Commission's determination that South Shore Tri-Town Development Corporation is a public entity. And then it is likened as, it would then have to be likened as a municipal district, which it, you know, it probably would be, but I think we need to follow a, a process, you know, for special municipal employee requests.
My other thought is, we're in the process of reviewing the whole special municipal employee status at this point.
That's correct.
Letters were going out to everybody who has that status, and we're going to come back and discuss it at that point. Would it be, make more sense to put this on at that point in time instead of granting it and then having to send Mr. Lavin a letter asking him why, to justify why he's getting it?
It'd be, it's certainly up to the board.
I don't know what you guys think, but...
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I agree with that a hundred percent.
Tom?
I have a more broad question, though. It seems before I arrived on the board, it seemed like the policy was to grant any and every committee, board, special municipal employee status. But based on our last meeting, it seemed like we were following a policy that those people had to apply or write a letter that they want to be granted, special municipal employee status. And I got the sense, although it wasn't stated, if they don't, probably wouldn't look favorably on granting that, that status. Just trying to get a, a feel for where we might be going here. Because I, I think the concern at the time, I, I know somebody spoke, is if somebody doesn't listen or know that, oh, we missed them in sending the letter, will we create a situation and put some people who volunteer for various boards and committees and whatever and potentially harms way with one of this, these innocuous sort of situations that could arise that doesn't seem like a problem, but could be?
Right. But, again, that's something we're going to be taking up once that letter goes out. So I, I'm not sure, we're, tonight, we're just discussing whether or not to grant it to Mr. Lavin, so...
But isn't the letter going out asking people if they want to be...
The letter going out is to, for them to state why they think they need to have special municipal employee status.
Right, what Mr. Lavin is doing in his letter.
Yeah.
So he basically just jumped in the gun.
I guess.
So, I mean, I wouldn't have a problem with approving it if that's, I mean, like, I mean, I mean, I don't want to do what, one, one at a time for the next, you know, thirty meetings, but, I mean...
I just think we're taking a broad look at the whole thing as to what positions should have it, what positions shouldn't have it.
There's, there's a couple of things that happen. I've been, and I did supply the board, I have done more work on, was a handbook for appointed committees that does explain what special municipal employee status is and ethics and stuff like that. Something that we really, I've spoken to the town manager, should have supplied to individual boards. And I also understand that if you can't take one member of, say, a particular board, the zoning board of the Park and Rec, and designate that person, you have to designate the whole committee. So, I mean, I, I really don't want to show any disrespect to Mr. Lavin, but I think I'd agree with Mr. Burberry, and I just, so we'll wait until we kind of get some of those things under wraps. But I, I mean, I don't care whatever the wish of the board is.
But he's the only person for advocating on this board?
True.
He is, but the other thing is, Ken, he's been on that board for, I think, ten years and hasn't been a special municipal employee, so...
So I haven't been much fuss about it until...
I know, but I'm just saying, for him to wait another month...
My, my only concern is I hate to have him resign in anger. I mean, I haven't spoken to him, so I don't know. I, he's been on this so long, he's done a good job representing...
He's done a very good job, yeah.
Oh, I, by all means, if I thought it was going to come to that, I, I, you know, support it. Again, it's, doesn't mean much either way to me. It is something that I, is, is I've reflected on, on the situation that we put other committees and boards in, because my, I'll take the, I didn't, I didn't have a good knowledge of what the state had imposed on us. I really, truly didn't know and truly didn't understand. And, you know, now I have a better idea, but I'd like to share that idea with, with more or less the, all the boards and committees.
And, and John, can you just go back over the process that town council was suggesting?
Well, with respect to this particular appointment, you could, you could make it, um, the appointment contingent upon, and I'll read it again. If the State Ethics Commission were to determine that South Shore Tri-Town Development Corporation was a public entity, which we believe it is, then it would liken it...
Who asks for that determination? Does Mr. Lavin have to ask for that, or do we have to ask for it?
From this State Ethics Commission, it would have to be Mr. Lavin.
So he would have to make that first?
He would have to make that request.
Could we do that there?
We could do it, you know, because if you want to, if you want to issue, let's say the board decides tonight that they want to issue the special municipal employee exemption status contingent upon the State Ethics determining that South Shore Tri-Town Development Corporation was a public entity, then we could ask. We could, as part of, and then we could party, we could ask for that determination.
My point is, instead of making a contingent on that, can we just get the clarification, and then we could do it all at once, and that will resolve the whole issue we're discussing right now.
Why don't we make that determination first?
We don't.
Well, I mean, the State Ethics Commission...
State Ethics Commission has to make it...
Why don't we request that determination to be made, and then if it is made, then we can come back in July?
We can, we can, we can call, I can call the State Ethics tomorrow.
Yeah, I think...
And find out and let, let the board know as a whole where we stand with that. But, but there's another part. It says, "Employees of municipal districts are treated, uh, are, for conflict of interest law purposes as employees of every municipality in the district." So, for example, Mr. Lavin would not be, not only be an employee, special municipal employee in the town of Abington, but he would also be special municipal employee in the town of Waymouth and in the town of Rockland, which are the three interested communities in the Tri-Town Development Corporation.
So would he have to get special municipal employee status from those other two towns? To be special municipal employees for those particular towns?
See, that was, that was my question, too.
This is the reason why the special municipal employee exemption status would be more appropriate in this regard, because he would be appearing before three different towns as a representative for the, for the town of Abington, and therefore would be treated under the conflict of interest law as an employee for every municipal, municipality in that particular district. So, um, the board, if the board believes that it is appropriate that such position be designated as a special municipal employee position, then you, you can so, you can, you can grant that. So what, what Attorney Fair is saying here is that if the, if the State Ethic Commission determines that South Shore Tri-Town Development Corporation was a public entity, then it would be, it would liken it as a municipal district. In this case, the district would be Abington, Rockland, and Waymouth. And if Mr. Lavin, in his capacity as a representative from the town of Abington, also has interests and represents, uh, South Shore Tri-Town Development Corporation in Waymouth and in, um, Rockland, then it would be appropriate if the town, if the Board of Selectmen believes it to be so appropriate to designate, um, Mr. Lavin as a special municipal employee in that regard. Now, in this case, it's not the Tri-Town Development Corporation. It is, um, Mr. Lavin that you're designating.
So, so it would involve the other members of the board typically, would he just...
I would imagine that each representative would have to go back to each of their municipalities to get that exemption.
Request that status.
Only you can grant it. It can't be granted by the, um, Tri-Town Development Corporation.
Why don't we, why don't we do, if everybody agrees, why don't we get the State Ethics Commission to make that determination?
And we'll bring it back at the next meeting and vote, okay?
If that's alright.
If that, if that's what the board so desires.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that?
I'm, I'm good.
Item number three, accept resignation of Jim Counter, zoning board of appeals. Now, I, in looking through the package, I saw that we made an appointment to the zoning board of appeals. When we, we appointed, or reappointed Mr. Counter back on May fourteenth.
But he was never sworn in.
But he wasn't sworn in.
That's correct. So there is a vacancy there.
This, but my thought is, we should probably rescind the appointment, just so it's not hanging out there.
Right.
Okay, so, I mean...
I'll, I'll make a motion, we rescind the appointment.
And if we can send a letter of thanks to Mr. Counter for...
Absolutely.
All his years of service on the board.
He served a one, has he served a long time?
He's on there a long time, yeah.
Yeah, so you'd, you'd want to recognize that length of service.
So we have a motion, and a second by Mr. Dion. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Aye. And then we can post that vacancy for our April meeting. Okay, item number four, appointment for alternate to zoning board of appeals. And that's John Shepherd. Mr. Shepherd is here, I believe. Want to step forward, John? If anybody has any questions? It's my understanding, Mr. Ayello withdrew his name for this position.
He did.
Say that again, Eddie, I didn't hear.
Mr. Ayello withdrew his name.
Withdraw?
I, I just have a question.
Yeah.
Now, we just created an opening on the zoning board of appeals, and Mr. Shepherd is applying for the alternate position.
Right now, yes.
So we have to post...
For the full membership.
For a full membership.
Yeah. And anybody can apply for that, even the alternate members can apply.
Even all the alternate members can apply, okay.
So this is for the alternate position. How are you, John?
Good.
Good. You want to just give us a little synopsis of your history or...
Oh, my history, okay. I didn't plan on anything other...
Recent, recent history.
Recent, okay, as, uh, I'm now retired, uh, for the last two years. I'm sixty-five, uh, not quite sixty-five, a bad date, September eleventh is my sixty-fifth birthday. But I've recently got involved with some recent issues and also being a member of the condo here in Lincoln Village, I've got quite involved, uh, trying to represent the people there and just overview of everything. I've noticed that I felt that there was a need in this area that I thought could be, when I see Route eighteen and some of these roads and whatnot in areas here, I just feel that we do need to get together on that more closely that would be in tune to a, a, a plan. So I just felt that I could be of help there, and I do have the time, and I'm willing to, uh, and I, I do do my homework, one thing, I do research. Going in front of boards many times over the years, being in the gasoline business, I went in front of boards many times. One thing I found, in most towns, when you went in front of these boards, that the board members were very qualified and they dug you apart. I mean, they knew everything about the location, and I, I've learned from that. That's one thing that I will try to visit these sites to get some input and have input at these meetings so that I can give a overall, I think...
Appreciate you stepping forward, we need more people to step forward. Any questions, Mr. Shepherd? You got any motions?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Dion.
I'll second.
And a second by Mr. Frainey. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Aye opposed. Congratulations, John. You have to get sworn in by the town clerk.
Town clerk, okay. Any time or...
She's open.
Whenever, okay.
What, eight-thirty?
Eight-thirty to four.
Eight-thirty to four.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item number five is the renewal of commercial garage licenses. And there's a, an extensive list of them all here. And generally how we've done this in the past, if anybody wants to accept any particular one because they have a question, we'll accept them, and then we'll make a motion to, to approve the others. So, does anybody have any that they would like to accept? Ken?
Can I, can I just ask a question? There are, there's three of them listed at one-twenty-three Center Ave. Now, I know on the map that we just received for the Auto Braz, or whatever it's called, we just approved, I see Dalton Garage on there. Ten for sale. Now, where is Big Lee's Auto?
Big Lee's is the one that you approved, uh, last month, or the month before it could have been. And so that, his map doesn't reflect that because you hadn't approved that license yet. The map that you're looking at.
Right, but is it, is it in front of Spencer's Pizza, or is it...
Yes, it is.
So it's separate then?
Correct.
So they all share the same address, but there, it's separate up here?
Yeah, it's this building here, actually.
Okay, alright.
Tom?
I just, the process, do each and every one of these owners submit an application, or is this just more of a renewal process? You take what's on file and...
It's annual renewals, but they resubmit paperwork every time. They, the commercial garage licenses expire June thirtieth, and paperwork is sent out, and they fill out new paperwork, submit the checks, pay the taxes. It's actually, it's a good mechanism to check if the taxes are being paid. This is the time to check on it and get that to be accomplished. So it's, it's almost like applying for a new license every year. It's exactly what it is.
Right. I, I would, I would just, without naming the name, at fourteen-twenty Bedford, I, I just want to check that owner, I thought that might have transferred. It's at the bottom of page two.
You mean the owner?
I, I would just check that, if that gentleman is the owner. I thought, again, that business might have been sold.
Mike, you have something?
No, I, I just kind of question on some of these, um, how, how long can a vehicle sit there in, in one of these proposed parking spots next to one of these buildings before it's, you know, I mean, can it be there for years, or just because they have a parking spot? Does the building inspector ever go out, or fire department, or does anybody ever go out and kind of...
Well, they go out this time of year and check the parking lots. They check the spaces, that's what they do. So I imagine if there was a car that had been just sitting there, it would, you know, it obviously go to his attention, and he would bring it up.
Okay.
But I can have that conversation with him tomorrow as well.
You just, just, yeah, not a question, not a, not a big deal, but I, I'm just more curious than anything.
Right.
How that goes about.
Any other questions? Ken?
Just for my own clarification, um, say you have a garage with ten bays, and they have ten parking spaces. Would that count, like, in the restrictions on license, would that mean they could have twenty cars? One in each bay and one outside parking the park? You know, do you understand what I mean?
I understand what you mean, yeah. The parking spaces are just parking spaces outside of the bays.
Because there's a strict...
So they, so like a, a space that's marked for repair would be brought, and then it would be brought in the bay for repair, but the, the spot in the bay isn't one of the spaces.
There's a restriction on some of these licenses, and one of them has fifteen repair, for repair, but it also says thirty-three total on the lot.
Oh, because they probably have a Class Two license as well.
They don't, we just, this one we just approved tonight. It wasn't, it was...
Oh, okay.
I'm...
Yeah, they do have, because I, that, that's the one that we just approved. Because in looking at their license, I looked at the plot plan, and there are a lot of spaces on their, on, on that plot plan. He's not using all of them, but their license, I think, is, I forget now how many spaces, thirty-something.
But if he's only licensed for fifteen for repair, which we just approved tonight, and two and then three, so twenty total on the property, and then over here on the right, it says a restriction on the licenses for thirty-three total on the lot.
So that should be changed, then, the restriction to what you voted tonight.
Yeah, because that's a new vote tonight.
That's a new vote tonight, yeah.
This could have been a previous...
Yeah, that's a good catch.
License.
Well, let me just, if, if the original owner, the one who's subleasing, is leasing him twenty, that, that was my question. It's showing lots that didn't belong to the gentleman who was here tonight.
Mm-hmm.
He's got twenty.
Right.
And it showed a bunch of other spaces, it was, I think it was AutoCraft or something like that. Well, it could have been thirteen more to bring it up to the thirty-three.
Yeah.
That was originally on the lot. That's, that's what I was trying to figure out, you know, how do you go about that, so...
Right.
I, I'm just confused by some of these restrictions on the license, because then you have another one where it says twenty for repair. Oh, but that could be, that could be, let's say, I see what you're saying.
If this is for sale.
If this is for sale, oh. But, but, you know, here's one here, commercial garage, there's no, there's no sales. Says twenty for repair, but it also says fifty for repair in the restrictions. So how is that possible? Did you see what I was saying?
Yeah, it could be a typo on the list. Which one, Ken?
Fourteen thirty-one Bedford Street. It just seems to me that the restriction should coincide with what we've approved.
Yep. Yep, we'll check into that.
Twenty to fifty is kind of a big difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, it could be a typo.
I tend to open up cans of warrants if I do this one, I did.
No, it's all, it's all stuff that should be cut.
Sorry, I like to go fishing. Now, I can see if they have a lot of bays, and if there are cars waiting to be repaired, and it has the inside, but...
Anything else?
I, I would like to refrain from Eddie Bailey's garage, my wife's spouse.
Alright, so we're going to accept that one right now. And we're going to accept Borderland Services, because I need to abstain from that one, because I represent them. Okay, so we're going to take a vote on approving all of the licenses at this point, except for Borderland Services in Eddie Bailey's garage. If somebody wants to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
There's a motion, is there a second? And a second by Mr. Dion. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Aye opposed? Okay, now we'll do Eddie Bailey's garage.
Good, make the motion.
There's a motion to approve.
Chairman, all these votes are contingent upon bringing taxes up to date, Greg.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah. Is that, Dorian, before they brought before us, are the taxes up to date or?
Not all of these are, but the license won't be released. They come in to pick up the license, they get down to the treasurer's office, sign off, then with the taxes being paid, then they issue the license.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve Eddie Bailey's Garage and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and one extension. And Mike, you got to do Borderland Services.
Uh, accept a motion for Borderland Services, formal motion there. Kenny, second way, Tom?
Yes.
Any further discussion, if anyone in favor?
Aye.
Three-zero-one. I didn't recognize you.
Oh, good, take it back.
No way.
Item number six, discussion on dogs at Island Grove Park with the Park and Recreation Commission, and I see they're here. Yeah, you guys wanna come up or?
No, no, dude, if you just wanna come up and bring a chair.
Bring a chair up.
All you folks can come up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Not just Russ. Come on.
That's good.
Do you have that one?
No, I don't.
Is that it, Russ?
No, that's, you know, we'll get into that, that's something I just thought somebody.
Hey, Mac.
That's why we want you to come and speak.
Mac, you can get up.
Mark, you're gonna, you're gonna speak first.
Hey.
You can take it.
Come up here.
Yes.
You do.
Glasses are expensive.
You do. I'd just like to reach across and say a little slack.
Put this over your glasses.
Oh, that's what I wanted.
Oh.
You have to open your meeting, Russell. That's not all.
Alright, I'm gonna open the meeting at quarter.
How are you guys? Everybody knows everybody, right? Yes.
Yeah, it's close.
So, this, I guess this has become a bit of an issue with?
Yes, it's, uh.
Dogs at the Island Grove Park in the pool and on the beach.
Probably about last September is when, uh, we got a letter from, uh, from someone and we started working on it then. We've had it one of our minutes, a few meetings. Basically, at this point, the way we have it, we've lots of new signage, uh, we basically wanted that if you're coming in from park ave, you take the road in the area to the right, they're leashed, they're over there, they're not allowed to be over by the other area, by the, by the water anyway. And of course, if you're coming in the other way, the direction's on your left, if you're coming across on the bridge. Now, if you, if you notice, this was, I believe I have here somewhere, it was either seventy-four or seventy-five that this has been in, and it's, uh, section fifteen. And basically, it, it's been like this for, since then, no person shall be permitted to take any dog into any park. So, we're talking any park unless it's let by a swivel leash, and in no case shall any person allow or bring any dog home or attended by him upon any bathing beach or into any park water or in any park building, whether the dog is leashed or otherwise. So, that's a, that's a total exclusion, uh, basically right there.
So, this is an existing bylaw?
This has been around since seventy-five, this is, yes, this is on our, I have all the bylaws here, the, the whole, whole thing. It's also on the website, so if, if you're missing on a few things, um, it, it mentions in here that, uh, anyone, whoever violates any rule or regulation, upon our discretion, we can, as you shall be fined, uh, no more than a hundred dollars, that's in there. And one I also found interesting was that the, under section twenty-seven, you don't have that one, says the added police department is hereby authorized to enforce all the above rules and regulations. However, you know, I, unless it's severe or somebody really gives me mouth, it's hard for me to go down to the police station and ask, uh, this is, this is where we're running into trouble, is the, the enforcement. I've had, you know, I've heard a lot of naughty words in my days, but I've had some people say things to me when I've asked a few people and they're like, who, who are you? And I just, you know, just kind of say who I am, I say, you see those signs, and they said, well, I'm gonna do what I wanna do. And, you know, that's, that's the issue, that, that's the part that we have the, uh, trouble with. So, we've been talking about things now, that item you have from, I remember from Dave, these are things Dave drawed down, um, he's been coming up with stuff to discuss at our meetings, um, certain ideas he has and so forth. Uh, what we're trying to do and, and what we came to a consensus, the board has changed a few people since September, was, I mean, I'm a dog owner and I know a lot of dog owners and I, I go through there, you know, at times when I'm walking, it's, it's a good cut through, you know, uh, but I stay up on the, on the road. So, we didn't wanna just initially just say, that's it, you know, let's cut it out or let's do whatever. So, which, we, we, we made a consensus and we put the money in it, tried to purchase the new signs and everything, let's put up these signs, let's see how, you know, how it goes. Um, we had opening day, let's say, I make, there was what, two, two people, I think we, and they, there were no issues, they said, I didn't know, I didn't understand, and, and they left, um, you know, they went over and brought, they were leashed and they, you know, they weren't, they weren't loose or anything like that. So, it's, it happens, it's just a matter, um, while we're there, it's a lot easier, you know, whether we have a lifeguard or something like that or excuse me or whatever, um, of course, it's the off-hours and stuff, but it's, it's just tough, you have eyes down there all the time.
No, I don't, yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, I wasn't on the board that September, I know they just put the new signs. Today, there was, there were signs down there, I was there, and they say it can't be in the, the beach water.
Correct.
Um, and then at another point, it says no dogs beyond this point, so I spoke to her, I let her stay, like the entire nation child, they were gonna leave, I just reminded her with the sign, and asked her if dogs can be in that area. She goes, well, it doesn't say can't have him here because he wasn't allowed. So, the sign, you know, the top of the hills is where dogs are at this point.
He wasn't allowed.
So, I don't know if we need to tweak that sign just a little, maybe put a line on there or?
Well, you actually, I, I think if that's what you're, you really should have a law that defines that can't be in that area.
Right, it's kind of.
You know, to be fair.
Well, you do, right? You have a bylaw that says.
Right, we do, cause the sign says can't be in beach water.
In the beach water, but it doesn't say they, the complaints I've been getting is.
That the sign says beach water, doesn't say beach area?
Yeah.
It said beach area.
What if it said beach area?
Yeah, I thought it said.
It may even say the water.
It says water, one of them says water, can't be in the swimming water. That's what those other signs are on, that are always around this point.
Upon, upon any bathing beach or, or park waters, so bathing beach, because that's the complaint I've been getting, is the stuff. And I, I will say that, uh, the people that go there generally, most of them are very, very nice people, uh, they, they enjoy their time there and, and their, their dogs are all in control, but there are a few that are unleashed that, um, have scared the daylights out of some kids on the swings and, uh, you know, I, I just, I, I, it has to be addressed. I, I myself have received a number of complaints of, uh, people riding their bikes through there and I, I, I would dare to say that sometimes at least twenty people with their dogs in a group, um, yeah.
Say, and, and we've discussed this also, that the, the next step, because it gets rid of any prey, would have to just be to no dogs.
Then I don't know.
But then it always comes down to the enforcement too, is how are you gonna enforce it? You said, Russ, it's the off-hours.
It's, and that's, that's what we're having, and then even, even Mark told me today, he had a, we hadn't even thought of, the woman that said, who are the dogs?
Yeah, therapy dogs.
Therapy dogs.
Therapy dogs.
What kind of dogs?
Therapy dogs.
Therapy dogs.
Well, I think we could all use a couple of those.
They were, they were, yeah, like, they were like, if I, if I. Oh, do they rub your back?
Five little cubicle dogs, five little.
Were they leashed?
They were all leashed, but they were also on the beach.
Well, you know, I, I, again, that's something we'd have to get counsel on, but I, I think there's a sanitation issue, as far as I'm concerned.
It's more to health.
And, and if I may, um, first, I, I just wanna let you guys know, when you meet like this, general public can't barely hear what's going on. So, I think you know, you're meeting the board, I think this one they could use a code. Um, you can, you, I hope the mics just don't seem to pick up the people on the side, so.
You may wanna think about.
You just want me up there so we watch and you can throw stuff at the TV.
I, I have to tell you, last, last summer was very frustrating with, with, with the, with the dog population, the dog owners. I can't tell you how many times I went down there at six o'clock in the morning, changed chlorine and all that, and the, the dog owners would be all over the beach and you'd tell them, you can't be here, and they go, well, why not? And, uh, what signs, that sign, and you'd do it day after day, every morning, and at night, it's a free-for-all, after everybody leaves. Um, you know, I, I'm, the board knows how I feel, I, you know, after the season got out last year, I wanted no dogs period. Um, and then, of course, I've had some time to gather my emotions and try to understand the issue. And I realized that the park was built in nineteen-sixty-eight, probably, and, and opened in sixty-eight, and I think it's, was meant to be used by not only people to use the recreation facilities of it, but for people with the animals and pets and all that to coexist in the same area. Right now, that, that's not working well. Um, those people still, if we went down there right now, we'll probably find all kinds of dogs on the beach, on the dock, um, you go there, you find twenty-five sticks in the water, I know what those are from. Um, so, I, I, you know, I, what we tried to do was post a sign saying, no dogs beyond this point. Basically, it kinda encompasses the eager bee vacation pool, so we're saying, don't come over here, you know, go the other way. Um, one guy got upset at me and says, well, now you're kicking us out? I said, no, we're not kicking you out, well, that's what the sign says. I said, that's absolutely amazing, because we've, we have other signs up here and you haven't read those yet, you know, but we've had to add more signs and more signs, so. Um, and today, we had a lady on the beach with five cute little dogs and I said to her, you can't be on the beach with the dogs, the kids are there, on a leash, whatever, they're therapy dogs. Okay, she goes, I have paperwork and certificates and all that. I said, I said, I, I don't wanna be rude, but, you know, I can make up any certificate I want on my computer or anything like that. I said, how do I verify that these are truly supposed to be therapy dogs? Tell me who I can call and, and get some information on this and this is a registered type of dog. Well, I don't think there is anybody and I'm new to the area. And I said, okay, I said, but, you know, we just can't have the dogs here on the beach. She says, well, I've been told by many a people that this is a dog park.
Oh, I, I.
That's, that's just what she said to me.
There's a lot of out-of-town people using the facility.
Right, and that's what she said to me today. I've been told that this is a dog park. And I, and you're right, Mike, it's an absolute health issue, you know, I mean, you know, if they urinate on the beach, I've never seen anybody pick up a shovel and put sand in, in that, and the kids are out there the next day. Um, they may do, they may do good with the, the fecal matter and pick that up a little better, but they don't do anything with, when they urinate and it is frustrating and we realize all the issues that go with it are being politically correct, enforcement and all that, and I, I think this is a first good step, because I think if everybody's on board with this and we, we come up with a plan of how we're going to try to control and address it and keep everybody happy if we can, um, that everybody's kinda on board with the same idea and plan. So, when phone calls come, you know, everybody, it's been discussed amongst a number of different groups, you know, whether it's even adding the board of health in this conversation, um, of how we do that.
Have you ever met our health agent?
Pardon?
No.
So, I mean, that's, kind of in a nutshell, it's.
No, no, I, you know, we owe them something. I, I had conversations over the weekend with a number of people. I, I think any owner that goes over there with his dog on a leash away from the pool is more than welcome to go there.
And that's, that's exactly what's written here. And it, and so we kept it that way, permitted to take them in a park as long as they got the leash, but then the exception is, is the waters, is the falls. And then that's.
Could, is there any way, again, just to back up, uh, you know, everybody's gonna look at us, this group as being the anti-dog or, or anti, we're not, you know, but is there any way we could post, have this written town of Abbott and bylaws and have this section sixteen stated, so the people could actually read it when they're in that area, so that they know, we're just not making this up, this is something we've done.
Right.
And I do agree with you, Mike, if it goes forward, I think we should ask, you know, the board of health what, what it is, because it involves the safety of kids too, because there's, there's some of the complaints I received of the young children growing up down there, the dogs are very happy, they're running free and they're very excited and they go and they, and they jump on the kids and it scares the daylights out of them, it's a normal course of action for an animal, but, uh, it's, it's just creating, there's just too many.
See, that's somebody who's breaking the leash law.
Sure.
And then the thing is, is even though it says we can fine no more than a hundred, who goes down there and starts slapping fines?
And it is nothing, I, I have a dog, I love that dog, it, there's nothing, there's good feeling, if you can take that animal out in the woods, take him off the leash and let him run. And, and, you know, that's what has happened here, I think, for some people.
Unless it's a way of, like, I know the, how the police, when they, where they take it, say you get money back, I don't know if it's a way where.
Wow. No, 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 don't, don't tell, don't tell Mrs. Yagastino that, that's.
I couldn't hear you anyway.
That may help find, you know, all jokes aside, it really may help find the dog officer's position. I mean, if we do have.
Well, it, it's tough. I, you know, my suggestion one time I did go to your board was to have the dog officer may, maybe make a couple of visits down there and not find the people, I, I don't think, but, but to warn the people and to show them this bylaw, this is very important for the people to know, we're not making this up.
Well, in one letter that I previously had sent to John, that was basically my question, like, what are, like, could we, you know, I, I realize it's a, it's a tough position between two towns and I was thinking like, maybe it would only take like one month, cause once people show up on, say, the Sunday mornings or when we, when it's that, and then, ah, that person's there, they don't, they don't only have to see him twice to say, I'm not gonna be here anymore.
Yeah, I'll go someplace else.
And it may work or it may, you know, I don't, I don't know, I, but it's also, I don't have authority, I don't believe, over that person to say.
Yeah.
Could you go, that's, that's where I was like, I'm, I'm not gonna call and just say, hey, listen.
Yeah, we're not trying to impose our will on that, we're just trying to make it right for everybody.
Right, so.
Tom Hudson?
Well, yeah, I, I just, um, when I look at this, it's very well done, um, the two, two basic issues are, one, dogs not being on leashes, and two, dog waste not being picked up by owners. Of, of the total problem, is the one that's more prevalent than the other or are they equal? What, what's the, the biggest issue, dogs running around?
I wouldn't say they're equal, because if that dog's running, you know, what basically got this up starting, somebody wrote a letter to the Snackman, saying that dogs came and, you know, nicked at their kids and they were just excited, like dogs get, and the kids wanted, where they were not gonna get eaten, whatever, I don't know.
Yeah.
But that's something, and then the dog fecal matter, I don't think they're both the same.
I think they're the same, even when the dogs are on a leash, the dogs will just stop at a tree, they just stop, they do, they.
Well, and, and what we've found is that even when they do pick up the fecal matter and they put it in a plastic bag, they go over to where the barrel was and just stack it there. It's like an invisible, it's a, it's a pile, it's, instead of walking.
Out of the total population of people that come, what percentage do you think are responsible dog owners and how many are, is it eighty, twenty, is it ninety, ten, is it fifty, fifty, is it less?
I, I'd say it's tough, because I, all I can say is, I know a lot of people in this town.
Right.
And the people that I've run into that I knew, I find maybe just because they know me. And the people I did know, which say, have said, like, because I've asked them, "Where are you from?" And they've said, you know, "I'm either from Wayne," or whatever. And, and those I've had the, the issues with, where they told me, like, "I'm not going to listen to you" type thing. But they did, you can kind of take off just in case. But to put a percentage to it, I can't.
Right. Because my typical philosophy would be, you know, if we, if we can try to cure it with education, you know, that would be, I think, probably the way we'd want to go. And if it was ninety, ten, eighty, twenty, you could maybe attack those ten to twenty percent.
Right. And I think that's why we, we have started with the, we noticed that maybe there wasn't enough signs. But I do like the idea, maybe we could get this, if we have a, do we still have the plastic cakes on the bridge side?
Put it on, put it on the pool house, or something like that, right there.
Yeah, or something that we can get is put in plastic.
What I've observed down there is at certain times, especially in the evening, that there, there could be upwards of twenty dogs and dog owners.
Oh.
And they are off the leash.
Well, go down there Sunday morning.
Well, as long as they're carrying a leash.
And they, and, and, you know, it's, it's a fun thing. But if you go down there, if you're another breed, and you go down there, you have a couple of kids, and you want to bring them down there, that's what I've received the complaints, because the dogs, and people riding their bikes through there, because they kind of, they kind of go up across the path, and then a little bit on the other side, and they come back. It, it is, it's just, it's just too many of them. And I do think you're right, Russ, is I think a, a good number of them are from out of town. They do think it's a dog park.
I mean, I, I get the same issue down the side. They take them off the leashes down there, too. And it's clearly against it. And I've had a lot of issues down there, especially because I'd say more of them aren't picking up their waste. I said, "Sir," and I said, "Sir," you know, "You need," and he said, "No, you can just walk away." And it was like...
Well, maybe to Tom's, I mean, we could, I think we brought the issue to the surface. We know what the problem is. Maybe...
I just have a question for John, too. Who has the enforcement authority for these bylaws or health?
Well, I don't, well, there, there...
Does the Department have it? Does the Park and Recs?
I, I think the Park and, by statute, by, by charter, there, I think that the Park and Rec is the custodian of recreational property. And they, and they, they have bylaws. But there are also town bylaws as it relates to animals and animal waste and animals running at large except for hunting purposes. And I, I just want to familiarize you with what the bylaws are that, that was accepted at town meeting. These are bylaws that I think were developed by the Park and Rec Commission.
These are like the regulations.
These are...
Right. And some of them, I, I think some of them run counter to each other. And I just want to offer, like, for example, animal waste. "The owner or custodian, every dog or animal shall be responsible for any fecial matter deposited by the animals on public walks, streets, recreation areas, or private property of another. The owner or custodian of the animal, when appearing with the animal on a public walkway, street, recreation area, or private property, shall possess the means of removal of any fecial matter left by such animal. For purposes of this regulation, the means of removal shall include any tool, implement, or other device carried for the purpose of picking up and containing such fecial matter. Disposal shall be accomplished by transporting such fecial matter to a place suitable and regularly reserved for the disposal of human fecial matter, which is your toilet. Take it home." What's happening is, is that it's being deposited in the barrels. And that, and therein lies the health issue with employees who have to clean the barrels, specifically reserved for disposal of animal fecial matter or otherwise designed by, or designated by the appropriate representative of the Board of Health. And finally, "Any owner or person in control of any animal who fails to comply with, with Sections A, B, or C of this section shall be punished by a fine of twenty-five dollars for each violation." That's what's in, in the, the bylaws of the town. And then, running at large, "The owner or keeper of a dog shall not cause or permit such a dog to run at large in any street or public place, or upon the premise of any one other than the owner or keeper, unless the owner or occupant of such premise grants permission. While in any public place or street, dogs shall be under restraint by owner or keeper. A dog is under restraint within the means of this bylaw if it is controlled by a leash or at heel beside a competent person, and obedient to that person's commands or confined within a vehicle driven or parked on a street," which I think might, you know, might be, particularly in the summertime, might be an issue. "However, this section shall not be construed to limit or prohibit the use of hunting dogs during the hunting season or training of hunting dogs, or during field trials for hunting dogs." And that's all I could see in our town bylaw that was adopted by, by the town. I think this was done about eight to ten years ago.
Now, you mentioned twenty-five dollars for the fecal matter. But I didn't hear, is there anything for them being on leash? No? Okay.
No.
Well, so tech, so technically, when we do see the people pick it up in the bag, bring it off and put it in a barrel, they're, they're not in violation?
They are in violation, because the, the, the actual means of disposal should be similar to human feces.
Yeah.
Which is, you bring it home, you bring that nice little hot little matter that you have from the dog, and you take it home, and you deposit it in your toilet. But people obviously don't do that. The problem that I have with it is if any of our personnel gets sick from any of this, you know, we could have quite an issue on our hands.
If a child is sick.
Exactly, right.
Oh, exactly. Same thing with a child.
That's a big problem, I would think.
But that's going to...
What, what Mr. Yagacino read there, you know, was something I'd like to see you have in writing down there. It's something. I don't know, you know, the sign would inform people or educate people of what we're trying to do.
We could, I, I could direct, in, in July, we have increased the Animal Control Officer's hours from ten to fifteen. We could direct him on a periodic basis to spend five of those hours periodically going down and checking that area.
Agreed.
And that may go a long way. And if he has the ability to find an owner who, whose dog is, you know, whose matter, you know, the fecial matter is not being properly disposed...
Well, like you said, I think what you want to do is educate these people first, and then that they continue to do it, then you, you know, you're fine.
I, I'm just worried now, now they'll say, "Oh, yes," and as they walk back, the cat is thrown in the rug.
Oh, and the water.
Do you know what we could do, and some communities do this, is they provide proper disposal bags. And we could put those...
And that's just probably drivers.
But isn't that the same as the barrel? That's what I'm, I've, I've seen those at dog parks they have. When you walk in, they have, and then you, you have like a chute deal, and you put it in. But then, you're back to, well, we're going to have our in-town employees responsible for...
At least it's...
Well, that's why we remove the barrels.
That's half a barrel, I did.
I just, just to establish, though, John, I, I heard two different things.
Yeah, that's my point.
The, the enforcement agent is the police, according to the park bylaws from seventy-five. But the town bylaws are kind of implying it's the dog officer. I think, I just, I just want to establish who, who do we think should be the enforcement officer here? If it does come to writing fines or, you know, people don't shake up... I think if you wanted to hold up, and, and, you know, let's say that somebody decides that they want to appeal this bylaw to, to the court, it would be the Animal Control Officer. I think that would be the enforcing entity. But what do we enforce it at, twenty-five or a hundred? I'd rather do the hundred.
I, I think if you read all of our bylaws, this stuff on, you know, disposal, so, I don't, I think then, at the end, they added the, there's, you know, and that's, obviously, that's where you'd have the drinking, public drinking, that type of stuff. So, it's almost like they took all the different items. And then, at the end, they just write, "Yeah, the police decided by authorization." Well, it, it's in, in a way, like, the, the Park and Rec is saying, you know, "If this happens, go ahead, come in again." That's how I was reading it. I mean, if you want to look over the whole thing, I, you know...
Those, those bylaw amendments we just passed included in there, and then enforcement mechanism also for the general bylaws of the town.
That's correct, which also includes these bylaws, which means that...
Yeah, I thought it was unwritten. You could just, there was a fine there, even though it didn't have to state it. Broke the bylaw. It was, it was a standard.
And the new bylaw that we just adopted, that's the case.
Yeah.
Yeah, nineteen seventy-five.
But I, I do, to your point, Tom, I think the dog officer probably would be the most appropriate person to go in there initially. And I, I'm not so sure that he doesn't have some kind of special police powers.
I would think so.
But I, I don't know. You know, there's probably a reason they call him the Animal Control Officer, but...
I mean, the, the other thing I'd suggest would be just as far as information is, you know, get it out in the Mariner and the other outlets that we have to make sure people are sort of on notice, that it has become a problem. It's a problem now in the summertime with the pool being active. A lot of people down there, and that we intend to step up, you know, education and enforcement if, if, if people don't seem to want to abide by rules.
Yeah, it's just that, you know, I mean, not anyone using Mariner, maybe we'll have to do something.
Well, I mean, the website, I mean, you know, there's, there's a whole thing.
Will you print out that thing right there, and put it as little slips, and walk down there Saturday morning, and you just walk around and handle people? Will you not talk to people? Sanders are here.
I, you know, Joe, I'm a hundred percent certain that the conversation, we, they know we're having this conversation tonight. They know. It was all, I've been approached by two, three people that have been there. Yes, they're aware.
And on the item, John, about the, having the bags, the deal you can buy, and we, we talked about that, and looking at, watching, we thought that by putting one down there, although we do say it's okay to write, maybe that's what we'll put one, it almost says, "Oh, if they put it up, this must be a dog park."
And, and you're right. And the bylaw says that you should, when you leave your house with your animal, you should have the, you know...
I, I, I'll be honest, I, I didn't even know that you had to come all the way home.
Well, that's what it...
Thank God I have a dog.
So, what are they going to do?
You have to treat it as human, uh, fecal matter.
You've got to try to do more signage, a little bit more information of the bylaw.
Well, I think the signs will check to make sure there's not a confusion there.
Well, what, what we can do is, we can, we can post it on the concession stand, Life Guard Building.
Yeah.
The regulation in plastic, you know, staple it right to it. So, and at any time that anybody walks through it, any hour of the day, it's there.
Is there any chance on Park Ave, one of those doing something before they even get in?
I just want to say, though, I, I think what we're talking about here as a group is, is the, the area around the pool and, and the house, the Egebeva house. We're not talking about dog owners that want to take their animals down there and walk on the other side. They can be leashed, and they can do, and go down and, you know...
There's all paths for them.
There is, there is. It's just, it's a problem, so...
Before we run by that idea, though, I, I think that's a pretty good one, if we could get permission to put the banners. I mean, it's very impressive coming up the Boulevard tonight for the three-hundredth in Abington. But I, I think that attracts attention for anybody coming down there, at least in the Park Ave side. And you could do something over on the Lake Street side. I, I think it's more visible to people, you know, catch their eye, that, you know, welcome, but welcome under these rules or however you want to, you know.
Right. And, and hopefully, they don't get, you know, taken down by, you know...
No, you put them up high enough, they'll never climb up there.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, we can, we can definitely...
Too high, they're going to be able to read them.
Yeah, that's true, too.
You put on vandalism issue down there.
You can do now. You can do now.
We do now. Well, we always do.
We always do, but, I mean, I, I thought it was...
If the sign's low enough for kids to grab onto, they'll tear it off the tree or whatever they're doing, I mean.
We were paying, we were paying what, about ten thousand? Was that what we were paying for the detail? It was around ten thousand, wasn't it, one time?
What, for the police details?
Yeah.
Cheaper to buy a wolf to leave that down there.
Yeah, that was a whole, a whole sum of that.
Yeah, I know. But if, I'm just saying, that, that's...
Yeah. And that, but they, you know what, you know what, realistically, that, that, most vandalism is going to occur at ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock. It's not, not, you know...
So, you're going to try to get better signage, better...
Right. And we, we want to do that, and then see if it, and see if it subsides...
You can work with John as far as getting...
Before we just say no.
Animal Control Officer.
Animal Control Officer down there.
I think the more, I think if you put up signs, "Dogs must be leashed," if you put up, you know, "You have to take the fecial matter home and deposit," I think then it gives any enforcement component, whether it's the Police Department, the Animal Control Office, or the ability to then fine the person. You're going to have a twenty-five dollar fine. If you put up those types of signs throughout, I think you'll be fine. But you don't want to take away from the beauty of the park either.
No. But if it doesn't work out, I mean, we, we could, and we'll post the meeting down there, so the dog owners will know, and we can have a discussion once they feel better about that.
The best way to cure this whole thing is you put a statue up at the town manager, and everyone can go there and just pee, pee on the statue.
It'd be like a fire.
Yeah. It could be clay.
I was actually the one that asked for this building agenda. I maybe someone else did, too. But, I mean, maybe because I'm on the historical commission, but Island Grove is on the National Historic Register. This is, I mean, it's a beautiful place. And it's not when you try to go down there, especially at night or in the afternoon. I mean, I've gone down there and had dogs, you know, nipping at me, just trying to walk on the beach, you know, with, with my dog. Granted, I had a dog, and I had it on a leash, and I brought it. Other dogs attacked the dog. But even when I've been out by myself, and you, they're like landmines, you have to dodge them. It's just, it's really ridiculous. But I'd like some of the ideas we've heard tonight. I don't know if it's enough. I would like to see a sign at either end, to a main entrance where people come in, a big sign with rules for pet owners, with all the fines and everything that could possibly happen. And at the same spot, have, have a refuse station, or have something so people, you get a bag, and these are the rules, what you have to do with the bag. And make sure that, and I don't care if you have to buy twenty signs. I know it's beautiful up there, and signs don't help it. But have a sign, "No dogs beyond this point." And they're, they're up on the trail.
We have that now. We have that now.
And, and, you know, we talked about, how can we find these people? We can find these people. Police have surveillance tapes. It sounds, it sounds stupid. They have cameras. I know the Lions donated thousands of dollars worth of cameras. They can set up the cameras and get the license plates of the cars. You know, put one by the grove, and if you see a dog on the beach loose, you match it to the, the car that came out. Because most of these people, and you said it yourself, Weymouth, they're coming from out of town, and they're parking their cars there. This is a serious problem.
Well, I, I can see it, and where you're sitting, okay? You can talk to the police and do all that. I'm just saying that, you know, it's a small town. I, I think the police have a lot to do. And I just...
Absolutely, absolutely.
You know, if they're going to spend looking at surveillance tapes, I, I think...
Well, they don't have to look at them.
Okay.
You know, the Animal Control Officer can look at. It's just an idea, but something has to be done.
Right. What, what we need to do is, like you said, we gotta, we've got to help the signs. And we don't want to go overboard, because it is the start. And we got to find out, you know, how, where can we point out where they don't affect, or they don't do that. I mean, I went to Island Town, April vacation. There were people walking dogs there. So, I mean, you're not going to find a more beautiful place. But out of respect, those people realize that, you know, and that's what we have to do. And hopefully, with the signage and education, we can give them a change. If it means putting one of those bag things up there, it's just, to me, it's almost, it's almost like putting ashtrays someplace.
But if you're having a sign saying, "Dogs are allowed. Here are the rules," well...
The, the rules also state that the owner is responsible to bring his own bag.
It does say that.
And, and you know, I, and I think you have valid, very valid points. The camera, probably, if there is in fact vandalism going on there, probably isn't a bad idea to have it in that, that vein, too. Because the camera, the cameras they have nowadays are, you know, not very expensive compared to what they were years ago. And they do a fabulous job. So, you could probably, you know, there again, it's all, that, that'd be something we'd have to talk to the town manager and stuff like that. But maybe that's the next step, or...
I think just to get things started, I like your idea with signs at the front of either side. I like that. Saying what the bylaws are, the rules are, pointing out where the dogs are, well, what, how the park it came over to. And I think you have a dog officer come down. You just don't find people, and have to educate the people to say, "I don't know if you're aware of this, this is what's going on. If you continue to act, you'll be fined." Have them show up at peak dog times. A few times, people just won't want to see them. They won't want to come here. The building's old, which is a great place on here. It's chaotic and everything. But I just don't think Island Grove is the place for them. And I think that, um...
Well, the pool area, not so much the road.
Right. But what, but what are the areas? I think it's great for dogs. And I have no issue, as long as they're leashed. You want to walk through the trails from here in, well, that's fine. As long as you want them to walk.
I think, like, this, I know your frustration, and, and I think eventually, if it doesn't rectify itself, then at some point, you're going to have to look at it. Maybe no dogs at all. People aren't going to take responsibility for the, doing the thing.
And we've discussed that. And we think that the no dogs would certainly be more enforceable than, because there is some gray here, like, "Oh, he just came off the leash." So, I'd put him on the leash.
Yeah. Well, they're, they're getting a lot of...
And he has, and he has that, that one law, what was it? That if the dog's put it, healing or healing.
Healing, yes.
That, you know, he could say, "Come here." And the dog, yeah, that's too much gray. So, so then, you would have to say, "No." And then, if they see a dog in there, they go on.
Or the dog could be hunting.
Well, no hunting, no hunting in the grove.
But I also think at some point, if a couple of people do get a fine, that's a small community of people who's talking to each other, and...
That, that community is, knows what's going on right now. And if you're going to have a few people that want to just say the heck with it, then that's the ones that, yes, they should be fined. But there's a lot of good people that use that. And they deserve to be able to go with their dogs, and they, you know...
They have to do so responsibly.
So, if we have the dog officer go down there, and they seize them off, they can, he can, or she can issue a fine? Is that...
According to, according to the, the bylaw that we have here now, in relationship to, I think it should just say, "Subject to fine," and, and, you know, repeated offenses. Obviously, it can be treated more harshly.
Well, we do have one in our bylaws, repeated, I mean, defenses and so forth. It is under our discretion that we can tell a person that they're no longer invited.
If the dog officer's enforcing the general bylaw, then I would imagine a twenty-five dollar fine would be the fine that would be included.
Right, right.
If there was a fine.
Right.
Yeah, under section twenty-nine on ours, it says, any person shall violate such rules or regulations or who refuses to subject himself there to, uh, may be excluded from the use of such facility.
Now, you have the police department enforcing those?
Uh, yeah, if, if you want, I can give you this one. I just won't be able to read them anywhere.
Yeah, 'cause I, I would have to...
I can email you one tomorrow morning.
Okay, that'd be great.
And like I said, it is one, if you go up to our, our website, I think it's what, rules and regulations?
Yep.
Yeah, it's under that and you, and you'll see in this one.
Okay, I can grab it. I can grab it.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of things that might mean. If you do end up putting a sign up for the, the rules of the park for the pet owners, you may want to put in there what Mark spoke about, if you have a service dog with proper documentation. That way they'll be prepared to provide it if they have to provide it.
Right, 'cause I believe there's a, a state thing that's, if the handicap line, you know, right, and you can't do that.
And another part of this puzzle, as I think we're gonna discuss this next, is that, you know, I brought up the idea of a, a dog park somewhere in town, a bok park, whatever you want to call it. You know, and I know that Griffin's Dairy, um, could be a possible site for that, so I don't know if we want to talk about that now or are we done talking about? But I, I think that's a key piece, 'cause if there's another place down the street, people are gonna go there and know that they can let their dog loose. So, that's a, that's, I think that's a key part of this puzzle too. It's gonna help.
We, we have entertained that and thought about, you know, similarly, we just, um, we were gonna try to find out from other towns that have parks, and there's a nice one in Weymouth, that's why I'm always here. But, uh, and find out like, you know, what, what did you have to do? Because I don't know where we fall on to, if it's put on by the town. I don't even, I don't lie in buildings. Say if you go there with your dog and another dog, that's that dog.
And, and you're right.
Right, I want to know all those rules, or if someone gets bit and they say, hey, this is a dog park. I came to a dog park and...
They, they have, they have a dog park in Weymouth, but it's still, and everybody lets their dog run, but it still says your dog should be on a leash.
Oh, I think they all do that, right.
Takes them off the, off the hook.
Right, I, I just, you know, we'd have to, um, we'll have to, probably at our next meeting, uh, I did put on our, our agenda for it and we can, uh, maybe have someone of us will, uh, start looking into that. But then it's a matter of going, you know, I got a feeling that there might not be a lot of happy people if they sat here and we want a dog park in Griffin, uh...
Well, there's enough property up there. I think that, that's something, yes, I think something could work. Follow them back and make it maybe go through the sewer beds and park there and, you know, 'cause you want an area that's, that's semi-wooded and also that has some shade, so it's not, you know...
They usually, yeah, they usually like, like a, they like a big area so you can play with it.
Right, and not grass either. They, they like a different kind of material other than, than grass, so that, you know, that...
And, so we'll have to look at that and cost. I don't know if it has to be fenced.
It has to be fenced.
Yeah, so I mean, fence is pretty expensive.
If you look up dog park on Wikipedia, it's about eight pages and it shows you what, yeah, what tells you all different things. It's really neat, gives you a lot of great ideas, so...
Let's see how we go. I mean, it might also be a suggestion that we could do it with Rockland Whitman, say, and have something that, that the three type, because it might be, and I'm sure it probably is, an issue with them, so maybe they have a parcel that we could join in. I mean, years ago, we had a joint dog compound and stuff like that, and I, I think the future for all municipalities to look at things more jointly than...
Yeah, we wouldn't want to go to Rockland because they only have bulldog, so...
Oh, jeez, God, get out.
Did you get that?
They've never been, they've never been hit with a green wave though, Ross.
Did you contact Jerry's, uh, Griffin's Dairy about...
I think we're gonna, we're gonna toss next on our agenda and, uh...
Did you invite somebody to come?
No.
But the original plan, when I was on the Griff, that was one of the options, a, a dog park. You know, that was one of the, we wanted to institute something like that, so hopefully they will look at it, they will look at it.
Yeah, I think that's just, the discussion will be whether they entertain, taking...
So if you want us to stay and always have them all on...
Oh, yeah.
It's not on your, you have an agenda at the meeting, or...
Just, no, we just...
You have no agenda?
We didn't have for that part, right, on the Griffin's?
We just were meeting with, uh, Clark.
Yeah, this meeting was select.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thanks, Ken.
Thanks, guys.
And you can always, you know, you know where we are, follow us wherever...
Okay, item number seven, discussion on vote to ask Griffin's Dairy Committee to entertain the idea of a dog park on Griffin's land. And that was Ken who requested that, so. Mr. Coyle?
I'd like Griffin's Dairy to entertain the idea of having a dog park on their property for reasons we just discussed.
You want to make that a motion?
I would love to make that a motion. I'm not sure. I really don't know how they, I know we brought them in to a meeting a couple of months ago to ask...
We could ask them to come to our next meeting if you want.
I think they have a meeting scheduled at some point. Uh, Cracker was indicating, they're, they're waiting for the delineation piece to be completed by, um, our delineation expert, and once that's completed, they're gonna have another meeting. You can take a vote to, to bring this up and ask them to discuss it.
Can I just ask a question? What is actually on their plate right now as far as, we, we've talked about agriculture, we've talked about, we have actually indicated walking paths, I think was, we've talked about solar panels. Those are all things we've talked about. Is there any, I know we had to have it mowed. Is that what we're following?
We, we are delineating, so we could, could have it mowed.
And that will determine what pass, what pieces of land we can actually use for agriculture or solar panels or a dog park.
That's correct. That's correct. And, and, um, actu- actually, there was one other piece you missed. They, they also voted to, to do recreational fields up there. Right, put two fields up there. So, I, I guess the issue becomes one in which, how much of it do you want to be agricultural? Because, and I think that the, the way the, um, Griffin's Dairy Committee feels, the, the number one priority is agricultural use. In that if, if they get somebody, um, to agriculturally reuse Griffin's Dairy, that was their first and foremost ideal reuse option for the dairy. And if, if the dairy, um, requires, I'm gonna assume ten acres or twenty acres, is there any left over for the recreational field, the solar panels, the dog park, and, and any other public reuse options that we, we decide that we'd like, like to consider? So I, I think that the, that their approach, at, at least at this point, has been priority, agricultural, everything secondary. And if there's enough land left over to do, uh, the baseball fields, that'd be second. If there's enough land left over to do any kind of solar paneling, then that would be an option, um, worth reviewing. And so what we're now doing is adding another reuse option to the dairy, which is a possibility.
Are we, are we wiser to wait until that delineation is done, so we're actually having to work with before we put something else on their plate? But it, it's probably, maybe we just don't have the land.
Well, you know, I mean, you've charged them to look at it, so I think that if there's a suggestion from the Board of Selectmen to do that...
Oh, I, I understand that, but they don't know what they have to work with.
Oh, no, not yet.
We better off to wait until the delineation comes back and we see how much land is actually usable, is what I'm saying. Yes, but doesn't, this, this land may not be, have to be part of the delineated land. It could be something that's not usable for farmland, but it could be usable for a, a bok park, a dog park.
Yeah, and that...
But it, as I understand it, Ken, you, you could be very right. I, I, it has to be mowed. And so if it's, if it's an area that we can't, um, we can't use, it's wetlands or so to speak, we can't even mow it. Is that correct? Once we're done with this delineation, if they determine that it's wetlands, we have to stop mowing it?
Well, I, I don't, if, if, if the use is, if the reuse is agricultural, then there, there, there is a gray area in relationship to what is, what farms, farms characteristically, um, live well or, or adapt very well to, eh, wetland areas. And what happens is that more of the land becomes usable as agricultural use, even if it is wet. And I think that if, if we decide that we're gonna then hodgepodge it and, and, and put in non-agricultural reuses such as recreational fields, such as solar panels, such as, um, you know, whatever else, a walking path, then we have a stricter, we have a higher standard of compliance with the Wetlands Act.
And all we're doing here is asking them to take a look at just another use.
That's right. I think you could do that.
Yeah.
And, and they could say, yeah, we don't think it's a good idea. Or they could say, yes, it's a great idea.
Was there a motion on the table? Did you make a motion?
Not yet.
He's going to. Yeah, just like I make a motion, did the Griffin's Dairy entertain the idea of a dog park on their property, on the, on the Griffin's land?
For discussion. I, I think that the idea is one that should be vetted. I, um, I don't think there's any harm to put it on the, um, the Griffin's Dairy radar. It's something that, you know, we've had some discussions with Island Grove.
Do you want us to send them a note of...
Well, hold on, but, um, it, it just, it just seems to me that, I think we're gonna run into some resistance.
Do you mind?
Sitting here now, but I don't think it hurts to make them aware of it because, you know, to say to go down the end of Charles Street or Monroe, I'm not sure if those residents are gonna want to see all the dogs showing up or even on Plymouth Street. But certainly there's a lot of land there that I think, you know, um, so I, I don't see any harm in just putting it on their radar screen to say that something, that an idea that came up, then we just want to make you aware of it to see if it's feasible or not.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Aye opposed? The ayes have it. Item number eight, update on the gas station on Route one thirty-nine and Route fifty-eight up in North Abington, South Park.
That is a rather contentious operation. The, um, you, you did receive in your packet of information an update, um, uh, from the, from the building, um, you know, from the building department's perspective. Uh, and I know that, uh, in, in speaking with individuals who've had a, a very keen eye on that location, that the electric, electric work has been done recently. I, I think that the board can take two approaches. We can call in a developer or the, um, person responsible for the development and get a timeline from them as to when they're gonna complete it. I know that this is, um, you know, an issue that requires us to proceed in a manner that, um, you know, does not result in taking an arbitrary or capricious action on, on the property. Because they are, in essence, as far, as far as the building inspector is concerned, within their rights to, to move as quickly or as slowly as they want without, by, you know, it, it, they're not violating the, um, building permit that they have currently, because they are making progress, although it is painstakingly slow. I, I think we, I think my recommendation would be to bring the, um, developer in and the, um, people doing the work and ask them, we can ask them to present to us a timeline as to when they're gonna complete the work. I don't think that's unreasonable. We've issued a permit for the tanks, um, and that's really all we've done at this point. And on five eleven, two, uh, on five two, two thousand and eleven, uh, the tank pumps were installed, the vent pipes and, were installed on five nine. You can see, uh, the date of progress on, on, on many of the issues that are, as late as five twenty-nine, they have an application for garage and storage. On five thirty, it was approved. And they have a building permit as of five thirty, two thousand and twelve, permit number twelve, uh, one four, dash, one forty-two.
Does a building permit have a certain period of time by which you have to use it and that it expires?
If, yeah, uh, yes, it does. I'm not quite sure what that time period is, but if they are working towards the objectives of the building permit, then it, it can be extended by the building inspector.
What do you folks want to do? You want to have them come in?
It, it, it just seemed to me that they started to do some renovations there. Yes, I do, but I, I, Mike, we don't meet for a month.
We meet the, uh, what's the...
July sixteenth?
July sixteenth, yeah.
Approximately, and, um, what if they all of a sudden made a rush to, everything started to fall together, we're not too sure.
That'd be great.
wasting their time. Well, I mean, if we could have the option of canceling if we...
Yeah, I think...
Yeah, we could. I mean, we could see how much progress.
Yeah, well, this, it was progress being made.
Every time we make a public comment about it, it's...
Something gets...
Something counts.
Yeah, I'd probably leave it up to the chairman and the town manager to make that determination as to whether you know, you know, tend, what it would be.
We'll send them a letter, asking them to come in at our next meeting and to provide us with a timeline, uh, prior to the meeting as to when they anticipate completing the project.
Completing and opening, yeah.
And that may put enough pressure on them to get, get it completed.
Okay.
Because it looks awful.
Yeah.
Between the zoning, the planning, the fire, ourselves for the tanks and the building inspector, you would think that there'd be something that, that we could hold over them to say, you know, get your button gear, let's get moving. I mean, they've all issued permits. There must be some, some sort of end date or criteria to these permits.
I, I did ask that question of, of Attorney Riley. I think I sent him an email. I haven't heard back from him. I can, I can try to, um, get him to respond to that.
And maybe...
Because we, we certainly, because of the issues that we have in other areas of town, we, we certainly don't want to be in a position where, um, we're taking action that we shouldn't take.
It, it appears to me, according to this, and this is all public information, but on January nineteenth, building inspector, uh, the garage and store application was denied for falsified documents. I'm not sure what that means. And then it was denied again on, on March, so I mean, there's obviously some issues here, so I would definitely be a favor of them coming. Maybe it could be a mistake or the false...
That, that did occur, and, and that's, that's where all the problems were. But, um, those prob, all those problems were solved and the building inspector issued the permit on May thirtieth.
Yep.
So I think since May thirtieth, there's been movement.